That's just one step. We're just gonna go back one, one short step.
And I'm in agreement with that, that we probably need to have a larger scale meeting. Those that have spoken, that's it. We're not gonna call it again, no. I wanna get, I wanna get this meeting moving on. I agree with Shane that we need, we need to have the, the central amount of water, all the rest in here. Water is a, is an issue that's been going on here forever, and it's a very delicate issue. So, no matter which side of the fence you're on, I listen to Gary Perea, and I, I agree with Gary. Beneficial use of our power, of our water rights, and what could happen in the legislature where they take those things away and nobody can ever use it. I agree with Travis, that we are a community of mining and have been for se- for decades, centuries. If we don't look at economic development and a way to move this county forward long after I'm gone, and this place dries up like a dust bowl and moves away, we need to make decisions. They may not be, they may not be easy, and they won't, no matter what decision you make, it's not gonna be, somebody's not gonna like it. We have to make, as a commission, we have to look to the future. We have to know what's in the best interest of, of this county. We all listened to what President Biden did, just the, the first couple of days he was in, and with a stroke of a pen, he cost almost fifty thousand jobs in one stroke of the pen. And these are hardworking people, and these are construction jobs, and in order for this country to move forward, and this county especially, we need to have an avenue for economic development. Now, if it's gonna step on somebody's toe here or there, sure. Do we have to have meetings, or we should have a larger hearing with the water board? I agree with that. But I think, instead of listening to all the negative aspects of it, we've heard a lot of that today, and we've heard a lot of people who have big, a special interest in it, or, or, or really worried or concerned about their water, everybody should be. But we also, as a commission, we need to look at what is in the best interest, and which is our next item, of White Pine County. And that's a very, very important part. And if we can get good, solid energy is the way of the future, I'm telling you. The mine up there, someday there's not gonna be any ore left, and they're gonna, I was here in nineteen eighty-three, and we all walked out, and guess what? There wasn't one job available, and everybody moved to Elko and every place else. We lost thousands of people overnight. I'm not in a position or in the mood to lose that. I'm not in a position to lose this county. And that's the way I feel about it. But I also understand the impact on ranchers and farmers. We've heard this over and over. This is an economic development package. This is something that's gonna be, like they said, a hundred-year plan. So, you have to weigh out the pluses and the minuses, but it's not all negative. We've heard everything that's bad about this project, and we have heard very little about what's good about it. So, that being the end of this item, one, which is discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Please, one at a time. Who's on the phone?
Ian Bowles. This is Ian Bowles.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't call you. Please, Ian, speak up.
I'll keep it really short, since we have been talking a lot.
Thank you.
I, I wanted to thank the people that have brought, um, the other perspective to our attention. I really appreciate, uh, we need to have all the information to make the decision. And I, I just wanted to put this out there and just publicly say that, um, that I appreciate and trust the other members of this board to be good people, smart people, who are operating in the interests of this county, and for the most part, we, we make good decisions. Sometimes we make, um, mistakes, but, um, I'd say that to say that, uh, when you bring alternative, uh, information to us, understand that, that we value your opinion. Uh, we're not your enemy. We're not, uh, Washington political hacks. We, we wanna do the right thing, and we appreciate, um, having all the information. And so, I don't want anybody to feel like we're ramroading this down, down anyone's throat, or trying to move forward in an unwise manner. And I definitely agree that, um, there's quite a bit more information that needs to be had before we move too much further. I also agree with Travis, that if, if the only decision we make that is minimally impactful is to give them, uh, permits to continue to move forward, I'm, I'm generally okay with that. Um, honestly, I, there's a lot of reports that we keep saying are gonna be done later. I, if those can be done before we get these permits passed, I'd rather see those reports done now, like bring in all the information, and then we'll start getting permits and start talking about this. I, you know, that's, that seems like putting the cart before the horse. So, that's where I stand with it. I'm a hundred percent behind economic development. But we also have some other economic development projects in process that are very, very close to seeing breakthrough that would also require water, and, uh, I need to make sure that this isn't going to negatively impact, um, something like that. And those economic projects aren't gonna bring twenty people and aren't gonna bring temporary, uh, construction jobs. That's Democrat politics, that, or that's Democrat economics. Um, we need lasting, uh, economics here. And so, some of those projects we're working on would bring, um, hundreds of jobs at a variety of income levels and absolutely change the economic face of this county. Those are the kind of things we're working on. And so, I wanna make sure that whatever we do here doesn't negatively impact that. But that's all I got to say. Thank you for, um, listening.
I have a question.
Everybody's got a question here.
I was just gonna make the thing. It sounds like this needs to, so let's table two, three, and four.
Well, that's what I was gonna do.
Luigi, get with the, the water board and, and get that meeting to go, going, and we can move on.
That's what I was gonna talk about. George, you've been here. Give your three minutes, please. Stay on issue, which is the water issue. So, please stay on task. That's what's on the agenda.
You don't have to worry about me.
No, I never worry about you.
That's why I wanted to point that out. Mr. Chairman, on your agenda, item one, eight-two, you're considering the adoption resolution twenty twenty-one eleven, which would allow leasing of water rights without offering to the public for less than fair market value. In the resolution, the last word is, item one states, the project would commence in approximately twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, and would require thousands of people to complete. I'd like to know how many thousands and in what time period. At your last meeting, I asked if the project was going to build houses or apartments. You get to provide me an answer. I'm not against the project. I'm all for it, but we need to answer that. You bring thousands of people here, where are they gonna stay? Where are you gonna get the water? The other concern I had was, uh, in your agreement, um, item five, page five, item seven C, gives the right to lodge protests with state engineer and oppose any application or filing. Again, I wanna caution you about killing potential future growth in that area. Again, I'm for the project, but I want some answers, and we're not getting them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Wait a minute. Who's on the phone? I know, Maury, wait a minute. I'm trying to do, four people at one time is beginning to aggravate me, and I'm trying, I'm trying to do the best I can by, by identifying each person. Got four hands up. We continue to repeat the same question and the same answer. So, let's do it one at a time. Maury, your commissioner, please. Please, you have your time.
I have a, a legal question for the, Mr. Contrary.
Yes.
I wanna be sure that we have met our statutory requirements to NRS two four four dot two seven nine five in regards to the, um, following the rules of our, is the water appraisal?
Yes, and, uh, that's what the resolutions are about, and also, uh, if, it sounds like it's not going forward today, that's fine, but the, uh, the addition that I talked about earlier also addresses NRS five three three point five five oh. So, we, we're statutory, we're legal, um, we, we essentially, at this point, have, uh, two options, and that's call for a vote on one or more of the items, or move to table one or more of the items.
And that will be next action. I have it. Thank you.
But this is, uh, also, uh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Chairman How. But this is a public hearing, so we do have to allow everybody who wants to talk to talk.
One time, not two or three times?
No, that's the, yes, that's correct.
But, okay, and we are trying to, uh, Bill, come on. You, you already had your time during this public.
I know, I, I've just got one more request.
Please come on.
When you have this meeting, get the state engineer, or at least the basin engineer here to be at the meeting.
Okay.
From the water division.
Give us those, list of people you'd like to have, and, and give it to the clerk, and we will address that. We will try to accommodate you. So, was there somebody on the phone who had a comment just a minute ago?
Mr. Chairman, this is Ray Perea, and I have a couple more items if you allow me to.
Real quick, please.
Yeah, uh, first off, I, I wanna make sure that my comments weren't, uh, in opposed to the project. I just wanna make sure that, uh, the water right, uh, current water right holders are, uh, are protected. Also, um, I also wanna make the point that you, White Pine County has these water rights, and if we don't put them to use, we very well could lose them in the future. So, we do need to be careful on how we move forward. We do wanna use it. We do wanna use for economic development, but we need to make sure that, uh, the existing water right holders are protected. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Basically, come on, BJ, you get your turn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I just wanna come up with some special things here. What I see happening today is, um, the, the decision that's being made today is approve this project, and it's, it's not. All this decision today is allowing it to take the next step, to go to the state engineer, who has the ultimate authority, whether that water will be able to be moved or relocated in that place of use or not. And so, all the things that you were requesting, all the reports, everything else, I would anticipate that's, what you guys need to realize is that is the state engineer's job, is to look out for the water users in that basin, what's going on. And so, all the questions you have today are going to be asked by the state engineer's office when you put this application in front of them. So, your approval of this today is not approving this project, and it's not saying they can go to work tomorrow and drill a well and do it. All this is, is doing is providing us the next step to take this water, propose an application to the state engineer, and the state engineer's gonna ask every single question that was asked today of the applicant to come through here. And, you know, everybody that got up and spoke today, you know, I'm supportive, and I understand everything that was said today. Um, you know, I got clients that basically are across the street from the highway from here that do the water right stuff. I sure we don't wanna do anything that would affect my clients. I had the conversations with this current project and said, hey, there's certain things that we need to look at so we do not impact the people around them. We understood that this was a designated basin, is not agriburde between you and McGill. Um, we knew that. Our discussions with them is, hey, we need to come up with some scenarios that we can work with a hydrologist, which we are working with a hydrologist. We have conversations with a hydrologist later this afternoon, and come in here and let's determine what's going on. Let them do this study. Luigi expressed earlier that, um, working with, had some discussions with the mine and their hydrologists, and their studies they've done with all of the watering. So, um, they have preliminary models of the stuff from the watering all the way to McGill. Um, you know, yes, we need to go in more depth to it. So, in those discussions, it was saying, hey, what can be done? Can we pull water from different aquifers underneath there, so we're not pulling from the same aquifer that those existing irrigation wells are coming from? Can we isolate ourselves from them? Can we do the other things that Luigi had expressed? Can we pump in the winter when they're not pumping, so they're not impacting them? Can we fill the well over a longer period of time, so they're not having large demands coming out of here? So, um, we surely understand all the issues that you guys asked. All the issues are expressed right here. You know, the last question, which is coming here, get the state engineer involved in your meeting here. Well, the best time to get the state engineer involved is when that application is there, 'cause they will go through it. That is their job to come in to protect every other user around them. That's why they have designated that as non-agriburde. They understand the issues. They understand the water rights in the area, and truly, they are the ones, the experts, that understand all this stuff. We can get hydrologists to come and explain all this information to you guys, and you guys might not understand it, but they will. They're gonna understand it, and I think we just need to have faith at the state engineer's office. That is their expertise. That's their knowledge. And when we provide the extra information to them, they can make a decision that's gonna be good for White Pine County and minimize the impact of any issues. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna kinda end this discussion right now. I'm going to ask the board, items two, three, and four, I think we should listen to after the next hearing that we have, a special meeting of, of water use agreement, and then we can act on, is it in the best interest for economic development, or, or, or the water, or real property values? So, let's do that. And I'm gonna ask the commission if they would, if I can get a motion to table on page two, items two, which is a resolution two oh two one dash one one, a resolution declaring that it's in the best interest of White Pine County to lease certain real property in the form of water rights without offering it to the public for less than fair market value. Item three is a resolution twenty twenty-one dash twelve, a resolution of White Pine County Board of Commissioners declaring that it is in the best interest of White Pine County to sell certain real property in the form of water rights without offering it to the public and for less than fair market value. And finally, item four is just, it was the approval of the water use and options purchase agreement between WPW and White Pine County, and discuss statutory requirements as per NRS five three three point five five oh, and NRS two four four point two seven nine five for the final approval of the agreement. So, I, in reading those three items, can I get a motion to table those?
Motion to table?
Motion by Maury.
Second by Shane.
So, all those in favor? Aye.
I'm opposed. I'm a native.
Your name, okay. So, we have Ian, Shane, Maury, and Richard. Any affirmative to table? Uh, Travis votes no, not to table. So, with that being said, a, a four to one vote, we will table this till after we can have a special meeting. And on this subject right here, because we are still in this public hearing, I think we need to sit down and get a hearing as quickly as we possibly can. I do not wanna delay this for six months. I think we should have, get a building, probably the convention center, set up a, a hearing on this, on this issue for the public, for the general use, and we can come up with a date, let's say, a month from now, and give everybody the opportunity to, uh, get their eggs in a row, and give the public their input, bring it back, probably the second meeting of April, and let's get this ball going.
I, I didn't know that was where we, I, my understanding was we were going to just table this to allow them to, to meet with our, to, to be on the agenda for, for a meeting with our water advisory board, and then to, for it to come back here.
Yeah, but the reason I said that is because after this discussion we had today, an hour, hour and a half on one subject, I think we should have one meeting strictly to address the water issue and all the issues that are coming about. And then, after we've had that, we can bring this back to a regular scheduled county commission meeting, because if we go and, and just delay it and bring it back to a meeting, we're gonna have the same hour and a half discussion. So, let's try to see what we can do. That's why I brought it up that way. Let's do it on a special meeting that's strictly on this issue. Period. On these three items, two, three, and four. And then, after a hearing to public, after hearing from the water engineers and all the other people that are involved, bring it back, and we will have all the information we, or that we can gather, and then we can make a, an informed decision as to whether it's in the best interest, this board, this board will make that decision. Is that okay?
Yeah, I just, as, as long as we can do it very timely.
Right.
I, I don't wanna, I, I, I wanna see the, the questions answered, but I also don't wanna see us completely do it several months shut down there, or to one or two. I, I, if it just can be handled in the next thirty days, I'm great with doing this in the next thirty days.
I, I am one hundred percent behind you. I do not want this carrying on. I do not want this to be another SNWA thing. Let's have them hearing, let's say, anybody got a calendar here for, let's say, uh, we're gonna be in budget hearings in March, right, Elizabeth?
Yes, sir.
Uh, the end of February, first part of March? Two weeks? How's that, Shane? Two weeks, we have a special meeting? In three weeks?
Yeah, yeah, as long, as long as we can, can, I, by the end of the month, we could, we could wrap this by the end of the month, so that we're not putting any undue stress on, on, on the applicant as well. I think that's, I, I, I think that's important.
Okay, our next scheduled county commission meeting is February twenty-fourth. Let's look at trying to do twenty, and that's a Wednesday. Let's see if we can do something on the twenty-fifth, which is a Thursday, or the twenty-sixth, which is a Friday, and do it that quickly, and we can have our regular scheduled meeting that we're gonna have coming up on the twenty-fourth. Have this hearing on the twenty-fifth to twenty-sixth, which is the end of February, and then we go back to our first meeting in, in March, and just, and have all the info we can gather. How's that?
I'm great with that.
Anybody else okay with that? Okay.
Hi, Richard. Um, I just wanted to make it known that the water advisory board meeting is, is coming Tuesday at five o'clock. Are you wanting me to, the agenda's already been sent out. Do you want me to change anything to include this?
When is the meeting?
Tuesday at five here.
What's today? Today's when? Is it, does that meet the requirement?
It's the sixteenth.
Does that meet the five-day requirement?
It's a three-day.
Three-day.
Three days, yeah.
Yeah, let's do that. Let's get the water advisory board and.
Monday's a, Monday's a holiday, so that doesn't count. So, we're, if you post it, what, what time is your meeting?
Five o'clock.
If you post it today.
Okay. All right.
I think right now, we need a break, because we've been at this for an hour and a half, and.
Well, let's get the meeting scheduled, so Luigi can have something.
Was there anybody got a problem with Thursday the twenty-fifth? You got a problem with it, George?
City Council, go Friday.
Friday the twenty-sixth, in the afternoon.
Are you talking about at the convention center?
Yes.
The convention center is revert, reserved for a jury trial, starting Friday the twenty-sixth.
We'll do it here. You can do that, right?
I have my room for setup of portable jack.
We also have the, uh, we also have the library meeting room.
The aquatic.
The aquatic center.
Excuse me, aquatic. Let's, let's look at Friday the twenty-fifth, one o'clock in the aquatic center. How's that? Is that okay with everybody?
Friday the twenty-sixth.
Friday the twenty-sixth, one o'clock at the aquatic center. Luigi, you guys okay with that?
Yeah, I don't know what other evidence and, uh, information we're gonna be able to provide, but we'll, as, as BJ said, the state engineer is gonna make a lot of these decisions, and we will, maybe you have some hydrology stuff, but, um, but we'll, we will be there.
We have to allow the public to have their.
Absolutely.
Okay, so it's Friday the twenty-sixth, one o'clock at the aquatic center. You good with that, Christie?
Yep, it'll be on the schedule.
Okay.
One.
Can we vote on that?
You don't have to. I mean, you.
So, if the commission, Shane, you okay with it? And Maury. Ian, are you okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, that's the date for it. Let's take a quick five or ten minutes, five-minute break to just kinda cool arguments. Thank you very much. On fire commission meeting is public comment. Is there any public comment on the fire commission meeting before going to? Hearing done. Anything on the phone, Mike?
No, sir.
Okay, we're gonna move in. The first item is, uh, on page two, item one, is discussion update on fire district progress, Brett North and Fire Chief Pat Stork of the city of. Morning. Good morning.
I don't want to report this. I'm pretty quiet. We've had a few incidents where we've worked together, all that stuff, so, I'm good. Got a truck and saw leg getting repaired, had all our CPAs done, tested. Southern side has been pretty much quiet.
Yeah, same for our end. Training scheduled, starting again tonight. Uh, scheduled throughout the whole, um, month. That's all B. Brett's, the thing, we're still doing our Zoom EMS training, so all the outline departments can participate with that. We just applied yesterday, and we're gonna be set up now as a training center through state EMS, the city. So, when we do provide classes, these will be going as continuing education credits for all the outlined areas. So, when they gotta renew, if they did these classes, they'll have to come in and spend a thirty-hour weekend. So, all the classes that we do will be recognized through the state with continuing education credits. And like Brett says, you know, uh, working together, you know, we had that big horrific crash down on three eighteen. We had a good turnout from Lund, had an ambulance, an engine to rescue. We had a ambulance, two engines, a support vehicle. And then we still had people here in Ely, and we had McGill on standby to cover Ely, so the part of everything working, the working has been going phenomenal, really.
This fire district is really starting to take place. You guys are doing a very good job, volunteering, and everybody. Having that type of, uh, volunteerism and work has been great, so good job. Excellent.
Any questions?
Anybody?
I appreciate you guys.
Thank you. Page three, item two, under fire district still, the, uh, discussion for possible action, the approval to utilize fire district capital improvement funds to go out to bid for equipment, including heart monitors and hands-free chest compressors in an estimated amount of a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Brett North and Elizabeth.
Thank you. Um, so, Brett always explained to me that it is time for the heart monitors and defibrillators. They are aging, and they are in need of replacement. And so, he, he came to me with a request for, uh, to go ahead and replace those and cost estimates of what that would look like. And, um, he also wanted to go ahead and do some hands-free chest compressors. Um, this lives in light of COVID and the fact that when you're doing chest compression, uh, you are not sticking your face into someone else's face. You use a device instead of actually doing the chest compression.
Yeah, plus it frees up an EMT or whatever to do more.
So, these are unbudgeted items in the current fiscal year. Um, however, you did budget over a million dollars for capital improvements at the, uh, fire stations. All of that money will not be spent. We will be considerably under that now that we know what the actual cost will be, and the contracts have been lent back. Most of those projects are, um, uh, finishing up. So, so what we'd like to, uh, go ahead and ask your permission to do is go ahead and utilize some of those capital improvement funds that remain unspent to go ahead and replace the heart monitors and defibrillators that require replacement, and then go ahead and utilize some of that money to, um, buy these hands-free chest compressors for our ambulances.
Now, the monitors are already outdated. Works gonna be hard to get parts for them, so it's time to, time to milk them out.
Any comments by any of the commissioners? If not, I'll go for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
Motion by Maury.
Second.
Second by Shane. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, unanimous. Item three, discussion for possible action, the approval of resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero eight to augment the fire district general fund from unanticipated and unbudgeted revenues in the amount of twenty-three thousand, five hundred sixty-one dollars to pay for expenses related to intergovernmental services provided and received. Elizabeth.
Thank you. And part of what happens when we work with the, when, I should say, when the fire district works with the US Bureau of Land Management, the BLM, is that they get compensated for use of vehicles and, and the time of, and for wages. And, um, we did receive some of that money back, um, because it wasn't budgeted in this fiscal year. In order for us to properly, uh, appropriate those funds, we have to do a resolution. So, this is just the formal resolutions that will provide for the salaries and, uh, the related benefits, and then contract services on the strawberry fire.
Motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero eight.
Motion by Maury.
Second.
Second by Shane. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, unanimous. Item four, discussion for possible action, the approval of a one-year extension for interlocal CPAs and advisors audit services in the amount of sixty-four thousand, four hundred forty dollars, pursuant to their five-year proposal that the county awarded for three years, and with the option of two one-year extensions. Elizabeth.
Thank you. Now, just in a way of explanation, this is the audit service that we provide by the county to the fire district through our inter-local agreement for centralized services. So, they won't pay all of this. They will pay that in the way, in the form of paying the county for those centralized services, finance, human resources, those type of things. So, they won't pay all of that, um, to be clear. But because they will be auditing the books of the, uh, fire district, the fire commission must approve them as the auditor of choice. Um, I, I recommend that this is, we did go out to bid, uh, WAMAC. This is the last extension on that, uh, contract, and I am going to recommend that we go out to bid after this one-year, let this sign a one-year extension.
Any questions by any of the commissioners? Hearing done. I'll go for a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Travis.
Second.
Second by Shane. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, unanimous. Item five, discussion for possible action, the approval of monthly financial reports for January twenty twenty-one. Elizabeth.
Thank you. And those are in the, your backup in the normal format, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, they'd ask for your approval on them.
Any questions? Uh, I'll go for a motion to approve.
Move to approve is presented.
Motion by Shane.
Second.
Second by Maury. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, none, unanimous. Item six, discussion for possible action, the approval of budget transfers within and between functions or programs within a fund that do not increase the total appropriation of the fund or adjust or approved grant slash agency funds. Elizabeth.
Thank you. There is just one minor adjustment for donations that came in for equipment, so just asking your approval on that.
Okay. Any questions by anybody? I'll go for a motion to approve. Motion by Maury.
Second.
Second by Travis. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, none, unanimous.
Thank you.
Item seven, discussion for possible action, the approval of the minutes from the following fire commission meetings. January twen- thirteen, twenty twenty-one, the special joint county commission and fire commission meeting held January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one. Any additions, additions, or corrections?
No, motion to approve both the.
Well, motion to approve both the commission meetings and fire commission meetings.
Motion by Lori.
Second.